I'd like to call to order the March 7, 2022 meeting of the West Bridgewater School Committee. Please rise for the pleasure.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The listing of matters are those recently anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may be in fact, may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being shown live on cable and livestreamed on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. A recording of this meeting will also be available on wb-cam.org. We'd like to welcome our student representative, Maddy Marash. Maddy, thanks for being here. It's nice to see you again. And next is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the February 7 meeting minutes as presented?
Moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next up is recognitions.
All right. We have two recognitions tonight, and they're both, well, could be sitting at this table. Mr. Flynn is not here tonight due to coaching his MIA Girls Hockey Team in the tournament. But I want to thank Molly Smith for all her years of service to the West Bridgewater School Committee, 13 years?
Twelve.
Twelve, all right, we'll give you one. Thank you for all your years of service. We really appreciate it. We know it takes so much time out of your life, you know, for the meetings, but all you do. We really, really want to thank you, the students, and the staff, and the families of West Bridgewater, very grateful for all you've done over the years. So we have a little plaque here for you, and it reads, "The West Bridgewater School Committee Superintendent would like to thank Molly Smith for years of service to students of West Bridgewater, March 7, 2022." So, thank you.
Thank you from the two of you. And Molly, I have to say, you know, this last year's been great. We don't always agree, and that's okay, but I appreciate your passion and your guidance and just, you know, just the passion that you put in, you have put in all with this year. Thank you.
And Molly, personally for me, I know when I first came on committee, you always were a phone call away when I need some sage advice, and I deeply appreciate that. And I know the town of West Bridgewater thanks you for your service, so thank you very much.
My pleasure.
And we do have one for Mr. Flynn, and he'll, we'll have to invite him back to April, as a nonofficial member. So, thank you.
Superintendent's update.
All right. First up, we have Mrs. Page is going to introduce some special students who have done some really extraordinary things in our community.
Great, thank you. So the following students who are going to come up and share some of their experiences, they were invited to a meeting over at the Council on Aging, and it was to all the stakeholders. It was a meeting for, to discuss the recent unpredictable and severe weather that can potentially cause more damage to the town of West Bridgewater's residents, infrastructure, economy, and natural resources. This workshop helped to identify and prioritize steps to reduce risk and improve resilience across the community as the town seeks municipal vulnerability, preparedness designation from the Commonwealth. The workshop, supported by a recent grant awarded from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, will advance community resilience, planning, and hazard mitigation efforts. So in talking with the students when they came back, they were super excited. They really had a great experience. They loved being part of the discussion. And so I had asked Mr. Bodwell if they could come and just speak to their experience. I thought it was great that the community wanted to include some of our upperclassmen who really have a strong, you know, value in, in the civic duty and being part of it. So he said sure. So they just want to come and just speak for a minute about the experience they had over at the Council on Aging. So we have Lily Chisholm could not be here tonight, but we have Emily Crookshank, Brittany Demals, and Alex Fisher. So if you want to come up for a minute, they appreciate having the opportunity.
Hello. I'm Alex Fisher. I was one of the students selected for this MVP workshop. We attended the second session. I would like to first off thank just Mr. John Anopoulos for recommending us students to go to that workshop. The workshop was finding vulnerabilities within our community that are subject to weather changes caused by climate change. And the whole workshop was designing possible future projects that would go on for approval by the town and hopefully in the future, the state senate for future grants. Our student team was one of six tables, and we were, we were able to get three of our projects approved for the top five. We had a project for Scotland Street, which tends to get flooded. We had a project for the Dam and Warm Memorial, which tends to overflow quite a lot.
And the Hockamock Swamp.
And then we got a project for conservation in Hockamock Swamp. West Bridgewater, it covers a good portion of Hockamock Swamp, so we got some, we got that approved as a project.
And I just want to say, I'm very grateful for having this opportunity because I didn't really know what I wanted to do after high school, but that really sparked my interest in like environmental science and just things like that, so I'm really grateful I got that opportunity.
I'm also grateful I got the opportunity because it gave me an insight on what actually happens in the town, even though I've lived here for forever. And it just gave like an awesome, great insight, and to meet some of the people that help our town like flourish and everything, so it was really fun.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I just want to say thank you before you run away.
Hold on, wait a minute. You can't leave right away.
I did tell them that they'd be quick and first, but thank you again for giving up your time also to come and share your experience with the committee. And any opportunity that we have for our kids to be part of, you know, things going on in the town, it's just, we're so thankful, so.
And it's one thing, I just want to thank all of you. It's one thing to, you know, to be recommended, but then to volunteer yourselves and to really take an integral part in it. It's very impressive, and I think the community recognizes that. I think you've done a great job in school, and this is giving back to the community itself. So hopefully you'll take that with you after you leave here, that community spirit. So thank you again.
It's a great opportunity.
Just some other updates. We did go over school choice during our budget meeting, and we are at 139 applications. We previously reported 140, but that really goes pretty much on average, our five-year average of about 133. So again, the interest is still very high. We'll continue to review all applications, make sure they are complete, and we'll start to make decisions later this spring, depending on the space that's available. And I will say that the space is going to be tighter than usual. We do have our numbers usually in grade seven and in grade nine, and we'll fill in spots here and there, but with the projects going on around town, especially at the elementary levels, I think we'll be very, very cautious about adding in school choice students to those grade levels. Some of the updates for COVID, it's very, I'm very thankful that this has been moved down in the agenda, and we're spending less and less time on it. But just again, some updates, we are continuing to have people, they're able to sign up for the at-home tests. They go home every two weeks with our staff and with our students. Parents do have the opportunity to pick them up if they choose to. They just need to notify the schools in advance. We have put updated information each week in the new newsletter, so if you haven't checked that out, you certainly can. And just again, with masking, masks are optional as of February 28, and that's both in school and on school transportation. So people are still, if they choose to, are encouraged and supported to wear their masks during school if that's what they would like to do. And then I have a winter athletic update. I told Ms. Hamel I would read this for us, I just want to go through our winter sports, and again, very successful winter sports season. Thank our student athletes, our coaches, Ms. Hamel, Ms. Audra, our trainer, Mrs. Page, and all the support staff that goes behind these great seasons. The Webb Boys Ice Hockey, in its first season as a co-op, the Webb Boys Hockey Team did not disappoint. The boys bonded as one unit from the first day, and both schools were represented with great student athletes. Team qualified for the MIA State Tournament and battled right down to the end with a tough overtime loss in game one. The team finished the season 10-9 and 3, and the future looks bright. We appreciate both schools coming together on this, and we follow the footsteps of the already established Webb Girls Ice Hockey Program. We intend to maintain this partnership for many years to come, and I think it's, it's really great to have the, now the sister or the brother school part over the boys and the girls. And the Webb Girls Ice Hockey Team finished with a historic 2021-22 season, led by seniors Rachel Smith, Ella Ranger, and Sarah Eaton in net. The team earned their first varsity win in program history, but they were not done there. Playing a tough schedule, the team went to compile a 6, 11, and 1 record, finished ranked 34th in Division 1, and just outside the MIA Tournament. The future is bright for the Webb Girls, thanks in large part to the foundation built by our terrific group of seniors. Boys Winter Track, Boys Track and Field returned to its traditional format this year, in which the winter season ran from late November through late February, with the meets being held in person at Wheaton College in the regular season, the Reggie Lewis Center in Boston for the Invitationals, and postseason. This was welcomed by all after a year in which no live competitions were conducted against other schools. The boys posted a 2-2 record in the Mayflower League and 2-4 overall. In this fifth winter track season, senior Madsen Anderson was the leader and anchor for the boys team. Madsen set an all-time school record in the 600 meters of 1 minute 28 seconds. That time was good for 10th place in the Division, State Division 5 Meet. He also finished third in the 1,000 meters at the league championship meet. If that was not enough, Madsen took up the high jump this season, cleared 5'8", one of the top heights in school history. He also was third in the event in the league meet, junior Ben Fuller leaped 19 feet 6 inches, capturing the league title in the long jump. He also ran 6.99 seconds to finish third in the 55 meters at the meet. Several others had solid seasons, including senior captain Sam Souza. A cadre of 7th grade boys joined the team and produced commendable results, boding well for future seasons. In Girls Winter Track, they were thrilled this year to return to Wheaton College and have in-person competition. Team was small, only 15 altogether, and eight of those were middle schoolers. Young team won two out of five league meets. In the MAC League, they had five girls qualify for states, and sophomore Ally Bassett came in third in the 55 meter hurdles and qualified for all states, placing in the top 25 in the state. Her and a teammate Ella both finished first in the league meet, Ally in the hurdles, Ella Dunbury in the two mile. Congratulations. Boys Basketball, the Boys Basketball Team is still having a great season. They travel to Wakona High School tomorrow night for the round of 16 in the state tournament, and that's pretty much New York. So it's pretty far away. The boys finished the regular season with 16, excuse me, a 14-6 record with notable wins over Division 2 Dartmouth High School, Division 3 Secoak, Southeastern in Norton, who was the number four ranked team in Division 3. The boys were able to win the Mayflower Conference with an undefeated record in conference play, two of which came over Westport, who only had three, lost three games all year. The team has outstanding senior leadership with the following six seniors, Chase Ryan, Zachary Bellaty, Ryan Hume, Austin Zhang, Nathan Raza, and Tommy Shetty. Chase Ryan is not only a team captain, but selects us the Mayflower Conference MVP. All-stars of the team are Ryan Hume, Nathan Raza, and Chase Ryan. Coach Antonio was selected as Coach of the Year. With the state tournament game at Frontier High School, they were able to upset the 13th seed in a game that all 14 of the players played in, and 12 of those players got in the scoring column. Please come out and support the team at Wakona High School for their game Tuesday, March 8th. Tips off at 5:30, and we do have a fan bus?
We do have a fan bus.
Is it full?
Fifty students, yes.
Fifty students, excellent. And thank you to Lucini for giving us a good discount on that. Girls Basketball, the Girls Basketball Team finished the season with a 17-4 record after losing in the first round of the state tournament to Millbury. Team finished undefeated in the Mayflower Conference, going 8-0 and 9-3 versus non-league opponents. The team was co-recipient of the Sportsmanship Award and had three players make All-League, Sofia Florio, Janelle Jacobs, and Amanda Jakes. The team did not have any seniors this year and were led by captains Dorothea McGrath and Amanda Jakes. As coach, she was proud of the work ethic, but most importantly, the way the players handled themselves on and off the court. BR West Bridgewater Gymnastics wrapped up their 22 season with another trip to the MIA State Team Championships on Saturday, March 5. The BR WB six-straight performance in the state championship, the team finished strong and placed sixth. The team had qualified to the event by placing third at the MIA Sectional Championships on February 26. The team also came away with the 2022 Cranberry League Championship for the seventh straight year. Congratulations. In the Southeastern Bristol Plymouth West Bridgewater Boys Hockey Team, the Hawks once again went undefeated and captured the league title due to the hard work and hustle of the players. The Hawks finished 13-7 on the regular season, qualifying them for the MIA Division 3 Turney. Unfortunately, they dropped their game to 8 seed Danvers 6-1 after injuries mounted during the end of the first period. The 10-0 Mayflower League record also qualified Hawks for the state vocational championship, where they lost 4-3 in one of the most exciting games of the year. Keegan Muncker led the team in scoring, and Ryan LeBaron was the team's starting goaltender. Both were named Mayflower All-Stars. Congratulations. And again, congratulations to all of our student athletes for all their hard work and dedication.
Thank you, Mr. Bodwell. Next up, student representative update. Maddy.
West Bridgewater School Online Pre-School Registration will be open for new families from March 14. Please stay open through the 28th. Kidney grader registration will also be open for online registration on March 28th. All West Bridgewater families, any families that have questions, or welcome to contact us at West Bridgewater School. New school and kindergarten classrooms have been celebrating Read Across America and Dr. Seuss. Last week, students enjoyed reading at the hand, wore crazy hats, and have pajama day. This week, we are wearing crazy socks, bringing their favorite stuffed animals, and the best won't be Wednesday. At the Roseville, our students are celebrating Read Across America and Dr. Seuss. Last week, students enjoyed reading at the hand during lunch, wore crazy hats, and have pajama day. Thank you to the PTO for donating popcorn to our students to enjoy while reading. This week, we are wearing crazy socks, bringing their favorite stuffed animals, and won't be Wednesday. For the month of March, our L will be focusing on determination. Every Monday and Friday during the month, the students from each classroom share their thoughts on determination, and classroom teachers are working on the treat in their classroom. Our L and Howard, the kids' heart challenge this year has come to an end, and the West Bridgewater Elementary Schools knocked it out of the park. Howard School of Roseville raised a total combined of $6,106, three times what it was the last year. Students who qualified for kicks will oversee them by the end of the month. Thank you to the entire community and all the Wildcats for making this possible. Heart health happens year-round, but we'll be gearing up for next February soon enough. Nice work. At the Howard School, the Howard School celebrated Read Across America with the celebration on Wednesday afternoon, who wrote "Reading for Pleasure." In addition, students enjoy this experience of popcorn donated from the PTO. The school council will be beginning a fundraiser to promote school swag, will be sent on Howard's Wildcats' school sunglasses. All the nations will go to the Howard Student Activity Account. For the month of March, Howard School will be focusing on empathy for our students' product expectations. At the end of the month, students will have their first whole-school assembly to celebrate together. Up to this point, assemblies have been career-level. The nation's classroom field trip held a grade, 6th grade student assembly on Fridays to review their upcoming April field trip. This program represents elements in the 6th grade curriculum frameworks in a collaborative and immersive environment. So many experiences students can look forward to, including field, group, team activities, day-and-night hikes, science fair, geodome building, animal tracking, animal dust sections, family-style meals, nighttime sing-alongs, and time to socialize with friends in a relaxed environment. At the middle, senior, high schools, students in the PE and health classes attended a presentation called "Road to Healing: Prevention, Education, and Training." This mission is to provide engaging, interactive, and real education about impaired driving and the consequences. The goal is to have more people get home safely, reduce the number of substance-impaired drivers. The second presentation is scheduled tomorrow through E. Students from Mr. Anopoulos's and Mr. Anderson's aid push class traveled to the PennBE Institute in Boston, where they engaged in the legislative process involving the current Voting Rights Bill being debated in the U.S. Capitol. The great hands-on and fun learning experience. Students in the French, Spanish, and art classes visited the Van Gogh exhibit in Boston before vacation. Friend students have been studying the Impressionist movement in class, and they recreated their own impression of some of the great statues and pieces. For the month of March, we are focusing on respect. Our block teachers will be reviewing feeling, progress, manners, email, phone etiquette, and respecting oneself and others.
Great, thank you very much. Good things. Next up, under business. First is a voting issue regarding the Reed's Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Bodwell?
So Reed's Collaborative is looking for each member district, their school committee, to approve the reasons for the reserve and the limit of the reserve. So they created, Teresa Craig, the executive director, worked and created a very nice video, I thought, that's very comprehensive and talks about the collaborative, it talks about their capital plan. You're not approving the capital plan, you're just, you're approving or hoping to approve the reasons for the plan and also the actual limit on it. So we have a video that'll explain that, and then you can certainly make a motion to vote on that.
Hello, I'm Dr. Teresa Craig, Executive Director of Reed's Collaborative. I have been the Executive Director for the past 11 years, and this is...
Hi, I'm Lindsay Alberness. I'm the Business Manager for Reed's Collaborative, and I've been there about three years.
I want to thank you, the school committee chair, the members of the school committee, the superintendent, and the community for the opportunity to present this information via video. As we come to you with this request regarding our capital plan, I would like to provide a brief overview of Reed's programs, services, and locations. Hello, I'm Dr. Teresa Craig, Executive Director of Reed's Collaborative. I have been the Executive Director for the past 11 years, and this is...
Hi, I'm Lindsay Alberness. I'm the Business Manager for Reed's Collaborative, and I've been there about three years.
I want to thank you, the school committee chair, the members of the school committee, the superintendent, and the community for the opportunity to present this information via video. As we come to you with this request regarding our capital plan, I would like to provide a brief overview of Reed's programs, services, and locations. Reed's Collaborative was established in 1974. Your district is one of 18 member districts that form Reed's Collaborative. As a member district, your superintendent is annually appointed as a member of the Reed's Board of Directors. The Board of Directors meets six times per year or more. Various subcommittees meet throughout the year. The special education administrators from member districts meet three to four times per year as an advisory group and engage in work as specific program subcommittees. Reed's is one of 25 collaboratives across the state of Massachusetts. Reed's provides many services to our 18 member districts and provides services to an additional 45 districts in Southeastern Mass and beyond. Reed's programs include Reed's Academy, which serves students with disabilities that impact their social, emotional wellness; Reed's Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, which serves students ages 3 to 22 who are deaf or hard of hearing; we also provide teachers of the deaf, educational audiology, and speech and language consultative services to students within their districts. The Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program contracts with early intervention for specialized services for infants and toddlers with reduced hearing up to age 3. Reed's Clinic provides comprehensive diagnostic and evaluation services, including psychoed, neuropsych, risks, and personality assessments by our clinical psychologists, CAPS, and educational audiology evaluations by our audiologists, speech and language evaluations, and other assessments by our licensed professionals. Reed's District Services provides a variety of specialized personnel within districts, such as speech and language pathologists, OTs, PTs, APEs, school psychologists, school counselors, all for short and long-term solutions, and also our newest family success partnership counselors. Reed's provides professional development, such as mentoring, educator evaluation for administrators, mental health and trauma, and other specific topics on request. We have eight classroom locations in Norton, one classroom at Bristol Plymouth Regional Vocational Technical High School, one classroom at West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School, and the two academy schools located in Middleborough, which we will refer to in this presentation. As you can see, we are very proud of the services we provide to the students, families, and staff of our member districts. Reed's Collaborative is seeking to formally establish the reason and limit for the Reed's Capital Reserve Fund through approval of member school committees. Reed's Collaborative is requesting that each member school committee vote to approve, first, the reasons for the capital reserve, and second, the limit on the balance. The reasons for the reserve, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, are maintenance and improvement of Reed's properties and leased properties, to provide funding for payment of the lease for Reed's Academy Public Day School location during periods of time when enrollment is below expectations, and to prepare to purchase the location of the Academy Public Day School to eliminate the expense of a lease beyond 10 years. The limit on the balance, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, is $4 million for the reasons identified above. Please refer to the Capital Fund Reserve Regulations, which are included in your handouts on page one. I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay.
Reed's Collaborative currently has two capital fund accounts. The Capital Maintenance Fund was established by the Board on January 24, 2013. The intent of the fund is to provide small annual funding to be used for larger capital maintenance projects to maintain our current facilities. The second is the Capital Building Project Fund. This fund was established by the Board on June 7, 2018. The intent of the fund is to provide for a new or renovated facility for the Reed's Academy Program K through 6 and 7 through 12. A feasibility study indicated that the existing facility would be costly to renovate and expand as needed. After discussions with various financial institutions, the financing for construction of a new building on-site was not feasible. I would like to note that collaboratives in the state of Massachusetts are not entitled to building project funds through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The current combined balance held in these two funds is approximately $1,180,000. The two Reed's Academy Schools, pre-K through grade 6 and 7 through 12, opened for students in a newly renovated location on September 7, 2021. This relocation provided an opportunity to expand available placements to include a DESI-approved preschool classroom, which is already enrolled with students. The new schools have a shared wellness center/gym, a cafeteria and kitchen, designated classrooms for art, music, vocational programming, and makers place/l libraries. There are outdoor spaces for field sports and basketball. There is playground equipment that is appropriate for elementary students. This space is welcoming and an equitable learning environment for students with disabilities who are referred for placement at Reed's Academy. In planning specifically for the next five years, Reed's Collaborative Board of Directors has approved a five-year capital improvement plan that encompasses both the existing capital maintenance fund and the capital building project fund. The five-year capital improvement plan on page one of your handout prioritizes improvements to existing facilities while also allocating funds to provide financial support to purchase or continue to lease 44 Bedford Street for students in Reed's Academy. The details of this plan over the next five years do not require a school committee approval, but are provided on page two of your handout to support the reason for the capital reserve fund and the limit on the balance.
This approval requires action by you as a school committee members of Reed's Collaborative and a signature of the school committee chair. Reed's Collaborative is seeking to formally establish the reason and limit for Reed's Capital Reserve Fund through approval of our member school committees. Just as a reminder, Reed's Collaborative is requesting that each member school committee vote to approve, first, the reasons for the capital reserve, and second, the limit on the balance. The reasons for the reserve, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, are maintenance and improvement of Reed's properties and leased properties, provide for funding for payment of the lease for Reed's Academy Public Day School location during periods of time when enrollment is below expectations, and to prepare to purchase the location of the Academy Public School to eliminate the expense of a lease beyond 10 years. The limit on the balance, as approved by the Reed's Board of Directors, is $4 million for the reasons above. The 18-member districts of Reed's Collaborative... The 18-member districts of Reed's Collaborative have provided consistent support and vision over the past 47 years. School committee members and superintendents have sought to ensure specialized intervention for the students with disabilities who require services provided by the highly qualified staff at Reed's Academy, Reed's Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, Reed's Clinic, Reed's District Services, and within the many specialized services provided to school districts. Thank you for taking this additional step to secure an equitable learning space for the students attending Reed's Collaborative now and in the future. Thank you.
I will say, I did tour the recently completed building. It's, if you travel down Route 18 to Middleborough right before you get to the Rotary, right across from Percy's Restaurant, it's right across the street. They've done a very nice job with that facility, and they're quickly filling up. So it's a very state-of-the-art facility for them.
Great, and that was a great summary of Reed's and the services they provide, along with the request for approval. So is there a motion to approve the reasons for the Reed's Collaborative Capital Reserve Fund and a limit of $4 million on the amount that may be held in reserve as presented?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Next up is another voting issue, the 2022-2023 school calendar. We received the draft of the calendar last month, and while I was reviewing it, I did notice one small error. The winter break was listed as February 22 to the 25th, and it actually should be the 21st to the 24th. So we did receive updated copies today that you should have. Does anyone else have any comments on the calendar? Okay, is there a motion to approve the 2022-2023 school calendar as presented?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Moving on to our third item under business, another voting issue, the fiscal year '23 school budget. I was unable to attend last week's budget presentation meeting, but I watched the recording, and I want to thank Mr. Bodwell and Mrs. Grant and all the other administrators involved for all their time and hard work in putting together the budget and the presentation. As a reminder, we're scheduled to present the budget to the Selectmen next Wednesday, March 16th, and the Finance Committee on Monday, March 21st. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year '23 school budget as presented?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I am hesitant about the budget because I am afraid that it won't adequately meet our needs. But I appreciate that it's conservative, and I am going to vote to pass it. But I worry. I think I made that clear last time.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. And then the last item under business is the Inclusion Matters update. Mrs. Dragunovich?
Thank you. The mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system, and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians, and families. It's not too late to join us for our March event, sitting down with Brennan Susirakun. Brennan is an actor, singer, author, fitness trainer, and motivational speaker. Born in Bangkok, Thailand, Brennan was diagnosed with cerebral palsy at birth and was given less than a 10% chance of surviving. Now, at 30 years old and more alive than ever, he is excited to sit down to share his story of the twists, turns, and triumphs of living a life on wheels. He will focus on the importance of diversity, equity, embracing adversity and inclusion, and how we can all use diversity to help ourselves and each other live our best lives every day. This will be held this Thursday, March 10, at 7:00 p.m. via Zoom. April is Autism Awareness Month. As the saying goes, if you've met one autistic, you've met one autistic. Join Inclusion Matters for an interactive discussion with a panel of adult autistics. Our panel will explain the strong, beautiful diversity of autistics and increase your understanding of ASD. Parents of kids with ASD aren't always aware of the work adult autistics are doing to further the inclusion of autistics. And sometimes, parents of kids with ASD are out of step with this work when they can and should be partners and allies. Join us on Tuesday, April 5, and learn to embrace the autistic community and create on-ramps for your child and your family to be the advocates of autistics. In the words of Arthur Chan, "Diversity is a fact. Equity is a choice. Inclusion is an action, and belonging is an outcome." For more information about Inclusion Matters and upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Great, thank you very much. Now on to warrants, again, Mrs. Dragunovich?
The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2022. Bill warrants, February 3, 2022, for a total of $63,704.68. February 10, 2022, for a total of $111,914.24. February 17, 2022, for a total of $118,639.64. And February 24, 2022, for a total of $56,010. The following two payroll warrants were issued. On February 4, 2022, for $534,479.75. And on February 18, 2022, for $532,193.21. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the Selectmen's office for review.
Thank you very much. Public comment, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. All right, then, moving on to the calendar and events. District-wide, there'll be a half-day on March 9. District meetings, there'll be a school council meeting at Howard on March 17 in the Howard Conference Room. There'll be a PTO meeting on March 29 at 7:00 p.m. at Barrett's Ale House in West Bridgewater. And there'll be an Athletic Boosters meeting on March 9 at 7:00 p.m. here in the Middle Senior Learning Commons. The Scholastic Book Fair will take place at Spring Street, Roseville, and Howard on March 28 through April 1. Online preschool registration at Spring Street will be held from March 14 through the 25th. And the principal coffee hour at Howard will be held March 18 at 8:30 a.m. At the Middle Senior High School, the principal's coffee hour will be at March 11 at 8 a.m. Math MCAS Session 1 will be held on March 15, and the math MCAS Session 2 will be held on March 16. The senior ball is scheduled for March 18 at 6:00 p.m. at the Chateau. ELA MCAS Session 1 will be held on March 22. ELA MCAS Session 2 will be held on March 23. And the Spring Musical Into the Woods will be taking place on April 1 at 7:00 p.m., April 2 at 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. in the Middle Senior High School Auditorium. Our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is on Monday, April 4 at 2022 at 6:30 p.m. here in the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons.
Actually, I think the 11th.
Oh, it's the 11th, sorry. My bad.
No worries.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, thank you.